Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the City of Sunbury Planning and Zoning Commission meeting. It is November twenty fourth, two thousand and twenty five, six thirty P M. Would you please join me in a moment of silent prayer and a pledge of allegiance? Amen. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Call, please.
Mayor St. John?
Here.
Mrs. Miller?
Yes.
Mr. Grumney?
Here.
Mrs. Crawford?
Here.
Mr. Sotterman?
Here.
Mr. Long?
Here.
Sixth present, we have quorum.
First item on the agenda is a public hearing, and the first two items are related, but the first item is a rezoning. Plan District Bluestone, S T P parcel number four one seven, four one two, zero one, zero one, seven zero zero three. The applicant is requesting a rezoning of the parcel listed from Agriculture District A one to Plan Commercial District, P C D, and the approval of the associated plan development. So the way the process is going to work is we're going to hand it over to staff in just a moment. I will lay out the framework for the public hearing. The applicant is going to present, we'll cover the staff report, we'll open it up to the public, and then we'll have comments and questions from the commission. That public hearing will end, we'll then go into regular session, and we may discuss that particular issue again immediately following. With that said, I'd like to hand it over to Mr. Vic Whitney to lay out the framework, ground rules for the public hearing, please.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening. My name is Vic Whitney. I'm legal counsel to the Planning and Zoning Commission. As Mayor indicated, the first item on the agenda tonight is this public hearing on rezoning to a plan commercial district. The applicant being B S T P Sunbury L L C. As you may see here, we have a stenographer who is taking down everything that's being said, including what I'm saying right now, because this is a public hearing. So in a moment, when I turn it back over to the mayor, and as he begins conducting the hearing, when it comes point in time where he may take comments, the commission may take comment from anyone in the public. You would ask that you, when directed by the mayor, to come up to the lectern right here. You see there's a microphone there. Please state your name and your address clearly and audibly into the microphone. The commission may or may not have questions for you during the time that you're giving your your comments. If they do, again, because we're, the stenographer's taking everything down, make sure that you wait to respond until the question is fully asked or stated, and then respond after the the question is over. That way the stenographer can clearly take everything down, leave a clear record for that. So, to the extent anyone in the public and the applicant feels like they do, or may want to give comment or testimony tonight, in a moment I'm going to have you stand up. Because it is a public hearing, you will need to be sworn in. We'll have you raise your right hand. The stenographer will do the swearing in of you. If you think you may want to give comment, then we do ask that you are stand up and to be sworn in. That doesn't mean you absolutely have to if you decide that you don't want to to give comment. After all, that's okay. You don't have to. But in order to give comment, you do need to be sworn in. So, at this point in time, I'd ask anybody that thinks they may be giving comment on this rezoning application, please stand and raise your right hand, and the stenographer will swear you in.
Do you swear at my firm that testimonial present will be the truth, the whole truth, not the much truth?
I do, I do.
Mr. Mayor, before turning it back over to you, I do have multiple exhibits here. I would like to move to be admitted into the record. We have Exhibit A, which is the rezoning application that was submitted by the applicant. We have marked as Exhibit B, a six-page document, which is the preliminary infrastructure plans. That's six pages, physical pages, but it is front and back. I have marked as Exhibit C, a twelve-page document, which is the development text that was submitted by the applicant. Exhibit D is thirty-six pages, and it just covers a lot of the remaining materials that were submitted by the applicant, including flat survey, legal descriptions, it's like hydrograph plans, some renderings of the Valvoline station, community survey results, and the two thousand and five development plan that was submitted twenty years ago. That's Exhibit D, thirty-six pages. Exhibit E is the public hearing notice that was posted and that went out to the affected property owners and the proof of mailings to those affected property owners. Exhibit E is a seven-page document. And then finally, I have as Exhibit F, the staff report, which is nine pages. And with that, I would move to admit Exhibits A through F into the record.
Except, thank you. All right, I'd ask the applicant to come up to the left turn and go ahead and present. Do you have meetings to share on the screen?
I do, yes.
Great.
Everyone hear me okay? Excellent. All right, well, good evening, everyone. Drew Zazowski with Bluestones. For the record, our address is three zero one West Brand Avenue, Chicago, Illinois, six oh six, five four. If you could, I think we will skip the site location. I think the commission is familiar with the spot. Folks in the audience, I'm sure, are very familiar with the location, so I've got a brief presentation, maybe five to seven slides. But I want to start with the site history, because I think it lends itself to the backdrop of our application and what we're looking for from the mission this evening. So, the history starts in in two thousand and five. There was a P C D that included a much larger mixed-use development that included both residential and commercial components for this property and others adjacent to it. From two thousand and six to twenty ten, the property changed hands a few times. You had the two thousand and eight housing crisis mixed in there, property sat. And eventually, Polte picked it up and began construction of the residential portions of Sunbury Meadows that are there today, and carved out a commercial acreage, about six and a half acres, along the State Route three frontage during that timeframe. My firm, Bluestone, purchased the property in two thousand and twenty-one. And COVID hit and site sat again for a bit, and around that time, we received an unsolicited offer to purchase the entire property from another developer. We gave that developer over a year to put together site plan and some tenants, and ultimately, we didn't feel like they could perform. They walked away from the property, and we took it back over in late two thousand and twenty-three. It was around that time that I personally took the project over for Bluestone. And working with our broker at the time, we put together a site plan that included a fuel center, a coffee user, a bank, and an oil change facility. And I actually came before this planning commission, you may recall, in February of last year on an informal basis to get your feedback on that plan. And I went back and watched that video the last couple of days and wrote down some of the feedback, which I think was generically positive at the time. Moving the buildings closer to Route three, work with the neighbors on buffering the development. Any way we can make the green space to the north more usable, do a traffic study, try to try to get Chick-fil-A, I think somebody, somebody may have mentioned. All great feedback, all things we've been working on since that that hearing last year. Just after that meeting, we approached neighbors individually and then collectively, the H O A leadership, who we were already in contact with. And we sat down with them, the library, and I'll be honest, the the feedback was overwhelmingly negative regarding our our project. And I think specifically the the fuel component. And I don't think a lot of folks can get past the fuel component and the traffic, and ultimately just said they really wouldn't support the development because of that. Which, you know, was a was a setback for us. That was a tough conversation to have, but we listened to that feedback, and in addition, at that meeting, we were given a neighborhood survey from over two hundred people in that community. If this is a very well-organized community, they know what they want, they know what they don't want. And the neighborhood survey identified that the number one use they wanted was coffee. Number two was a restaurant. Number three, I believe, was a bakery, fitness center, retail shops, childcare, banks, and I think grocery was was last on the list, but it was on the list, and gas was not on the list, very, very clearly. Around that time or after that meeting, I came back to the city, talked to the staff, talked with city leadership about the uses that were on their list and uses that were on the city's list, and medical came up in those discussions quite frequently. Again, gas was not, not on that list. So at that point, we totally went back to the drawing board on our site plan with our marketing materials. We switched brokers and really pushed for the uses that were outlined in that community survey. Now, folks need to remember that market forces are are pretty powerful. We can't force a specific user like our site or not, Chick-fil-A, for example. But we can direct our brokers to push our site with specific users, and we've done that, and we continue to do that. We got some feedback from some specific users that they would like to use a little bit more of the northern portion of the property, the green space that was alluded to in our last public hearing. We worked with A E P to relocate some power lines on our property. It was a six-figure bill to do that. That work was just completed last month. It did require the removal of some trees along State Route three. We did give notice to to residents that were directly impacted by the tree removal. This was required by the power company, so as not to conflict with the the new location of the lines. And I say we, but I could have done a better job conveying that to to the neighbors that were affected by the relocation work. And I've since met with those folks and walked the site and talked about how we can mitigate the noise from State Route three and from our development. And we're currently working on a landscape plan, first iteration of which has been sent to those specific neighbors, where we're talking about replanning the same number of caliper inches that were removed and putting up a fence along our shared property line. So over the last eighteen months, since we last appeared before this board, we've identified a medical user for the northern portion of the property, what we're calling Lot four, which you'll see in a second. It's on almost three acres. We freed up, again, we freed up that portion of the property by moving those A E P lines. We've solidified a deal with Valvoline for what we're calling Lot three. We've completed a traffic study. We've done preliminary engineering and prepared a preliminary plat for a restaurant and a coffee user on what we're calling Lot one and Lot two. And then, again, most importantly, we've, we have abandoned the the fuel user on the corner, and, you know, really done our best to try to get the neighbors in the city the uses from their their desired list. Next slide, please. So tonight, what we're asking for is a recommendation of approval on four things. First of which is a overall development plan, approval of what I'm calling Phase One Infrastructure Plan to support the Valvoline, which is work that will be completed by Bluestone, approval of a set of P C D conditions for the property, the rezoning, and then approval of a preliminary plat. So here is the overall development plan that we've come up with. You'll see this is color-coded here. Phase one, the blue area, it's what we're calling Lot three. We have a lease in place with Valvoline for this lot. They've been very patient with us. They've been involved in the project since two thousand and twenty-two or so. Phase two, to the north there, the green area is what we're calling Lot four, where we're showing a medical facility. That facility may be constructed in phases, may include medical office, urgent care, clinics, and other medical-related uses. And then finally, Phase three, which is the frontage along Sunbury Meadows in red there, what we're calling Lot one and Lot two. So on specifics, tonight, I I don't have specifics for you on users for Lot one, two, and four. We've signed non-scorzier agreements with many of our prospective users, and in some cases, we have not solidified users for some of these lots. So suffice to say, we're talking with people in these categories, and and they're asking us pointed questions about what is the zoning of the property? What does the stormwater look like? How are the lots divided? Hence, we feel like we have enough momentum to come before you tonight to look for these P C D conditions to be essentially reinstated. And with that, the P C D, P C D conditions themselves, they're in general conformance with the two thousand and five conditions. This was part of a set of P C D conditions from two thousand and five, which we'll get to in a second, which outline a number of different commercial uses. It's specifically mentioned in the city's two thousand and sixteen comprehensive plan. And I think after discussing this with many of the neighbors and the leadership there, I think folks understand that this was contemplated to be commercial all along. The P C D conditions that we've submitted tonight specifically remove a gasoline service station as an allowable use, so this is not a bait-and-switch situation here. We're excluding that from from the allowable list of uses as part of this rezoning. The P C D conditions create two subareas. Subarea A, which is Lots one, two, and three, of up to ten thousand square feet of commercial, retail, and restaurant uses, and then Subarea B, which is Lot four, the medical user, of up to seventeen thousand five hundred square feet of medical uses. So for context, the two thousand and five conditions, I believe, they allowed up to fifty-five thousand square feet of commercial. This is less than half that that number. Phase one infrastructure, I've highlighted in red here, the improvements that we're looking to construct probably next year in the fall to support Valvoline. It's a portion of the road. It's the stormwater detention and some utility infrastructure, again, to support to support Valvoline. We have an agreement with them. We have certain milestones that we need to hit. And again, this is step one of many. Valvoline will come back in front of you for site development of their lights, their site specifically, and these other users will come back in front of you for the development of their lots specifically. We're just talking about the the rezoning here. And then finally, the preliminary plat, relatively self-explanatory, but critical. This is what divides the six and a half acres into the four lots that we've been discussing here. This allows us to further negotiations with prospective users and start to sign leases and and divide the property. Again, step one, and then there'll be a final plat to follow. And then finally, summary, next step. So this has been contemplated as a commercial property for nearly twenty years. It's shown as commercial in in really every bit of formal planning by the city for the last decade. We've met with city leadership. We've met with staff, individual neighbors, H O A leaders. We've listened to the feedback. We've eliminated the gas use. And we're trying to put together the framework for coffee, restaurant, medical, and and for Valvoline. And we're looking for your recommendation tonight, understanding that we will be back in front of you as each of these lots is solidified. So next steps, just in terms of timing, again, Valvoline, Q one of next year, they'll be making a submittal to the city. Medical, we're hoping for Q two of next year. And Lot one and Lot two, I don't think will be very far behind that. Hopefully, they they beat that schedule. And again, I think last thing, just going to continue to work with individuals and the H O A leaders as we specify the landscape design, the lighting design, the overall buffering of the development. Prior to putting any shovel in the ground, those conversations need to continue. And ultimately, we'd like folks to come up here and support the development that we're proposing. So that's my piece. Happy to answer any questions at the end or now.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
All right, Alex, your staff report?
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mayor. So as Drew said, this is to separate this lot into four individual or separate this current one lot into four individual lots. Specifically stated in their plan commercial text does outline a quick-service coffee user on Lot one, a quick-service restaurant on Lot two, Valvoline on Lot three, and then a medical tenant on Lot four. So approval of the P C D text would not allow any other users but those ones on the associated lots. Drew also stated that this was in line with our comprehensive plan, which it is. The comprehensive plan calls out commercial outlots or small neighborhood center, encouraged a long State Route three frontage, and even calls out specifically four hundred-foot-deep outlots and then a road on the interior of that parcel. Based on what I calculated for these lots, it's looking at about two hundred and twenty-five before they hit that road, so a little smaller than what those lots were originally planned in the original two thousand and five and in the associated text with that. And then on top of that, a little feedback, as far as the zoning goes, from what Drew said, it was initially P C D. We have a reversion rule, so if it's not developed within three years of that, it reverts back to what it previously was, which was the A one agricultural district. So right now, it currently says as that. It was formerly P C D, and then this request is to change it back to P C D and rezone that with the text. And then, again, as Drew stated, this would be specifically for the approval of the rezoning, the approval of the development text associated, and then the approval of the preliminary plat that he showed, creating four individual lots.
Questions for Alex? Let's go ahead and open it up to the public. If you were sworn in, you'd like to please state your name and address and limited to three minutes. Alyssa, can you help me with the time? Thank you.
Hello, I'm Lieutenant Colonel Retired Ryan Schmuleski at one five nine five Nell Court. My property runs adjacent to the plan development, here with my wife, who also owns the property. I'm here today primarily to participate in the administrative process to preserve our right to challenge the constitutionality of the zoning ordinance of two thousand and twenty-three. Specifically, as applied to this case, it violates the principles of uniform classification by singling out a small, isolated parcel for commercial use that is entirely different from the surrounding residential properties, and it benefits private interests over public good. That is, the changes primarily for the benefit of Bluestone and the detriment of the surrounding residential owners because of property devaluation, nuisance of noise and traffic, and safety considerations in our neighborhood, opening up Peacock Drive three times to traffic coming in and out because they have no access to Route three. So what does the Sunbury Ordinance say? There's two pieces for the P C D. It is request or contemplates increased demand because of growth in the community, which we have. But the language says that it still, while still preserving and enhancing the health, safety, and general welfare of the inhabitants of the municipality, which comes from Ohio Revised Code, that word still means that is the primary purpose of the zoning commission is the health, safety, and general welfare of the inhabitants. Bluestone has zero reliance on the two thousand and five decision because the ordinance puts in a three-year limitation on development. So you must review it anew without consideration to that two thousand and five finding, which, by the way, was twenty years ago. Bluestone, in their bad faith arguments found in their text, says nothing has changed since then. Well, what's changed? People live there now. I'm one of them. The Parkway Plan is in existence. That contemplates putting stores and services where they belong by the highway, where people don't want to live, not literally in my backyard. And the Village Square Development would have coffee shops and restaurants. I walked tonight to serve and had dinner. So it makes the Village Development Plan redundant, and in fact, at odds with the development that the commission is claiming. What else about the bad faith of Bluestone? In their texts, they put
What are we doing? I need you to give some sort of like warning, and we'll give you a
Thank you.
Total after when you get to thirty, you have like a wave and then
The divergence for the trees they put in there, but they already took down the trees and then filed their application. And now I'm forced to put up with the nuisance of noise or put up with the nuisance of an opaque six-foot wall. I urge this commission to use their power, not for Bluestone, but using Revised Code six, one, six, three, zero, two, to appropriate this otherwise useless land for public use of a playground or park for the quiet enjoyment of Sunbury residents. Thank you.
Appreciate it. Next up? Next up?
Hey, good evening. My name is Elizabeth, or Liz Coy. I live at nine zero zero Fox Creek Road. I'm here tonight with my husband, my children, my mother-in-law, and neighbors, friends, some of my friends who have become family. I really appreciate the opportunity for me to share my perspective. It is safe to say we've earned the title of long-term residence, as Sunbury's been our home for seventeen and a half years. I care deeply about the future of this community and the way it continues to grow. One of the reasons why we came here was because of the potential growth. I think that sentiment is something we can agree on, that we deeply care about the future of this community. This particular area of land is unique, as it's nestled between two large, multi-generational communities. It is also the first potential commercial area that visitors would see as they drive north into our city. P C D zoning is broad by definition, but I ask that you carefully consider smart growth that truly provides to the community. Considering the land size, it is important to be efficient with its use. Considering the location, there was hundreds of homes, hundreds of families, it is critical to provide a safe place for our residents. We need to promote businesses that are welcoming, walkable, communal, and what Sunbury stands for, a small town, big ideas, perfect balance. More fast food, drive-throughs, and oil change facility simply do not align with that vision. And I did review some of the materials where they did campus the the neighborhood and of the word bubbles that were out there, oil change, you know, fast food, none of those were part of what the community wanted. While having access to medical care is vital, I ask that you look at the holistic view of the community's overall plan. We do not want to over-inundate Sunbury with medical facilities that may ultimately not be utilized or eventually repurposed to another kind of business. So this is an opportunity for the bright use of land that is for the people of Sunbury. Safety, community connection, and alignment with the city's master plan should be at the front of our minds. These will drive sustainable growth for years to come. Thank you.
Good evening, everybody.
Good evening. Randy Rents, R E N T Z, eight four zero, Fox Creek Road. My family and I have lived in Sunbury for approaching fifteen years. As you can see, I'm a switcher tonight. I'm a school bus driver in the community, not because I have to, but because the community needed it. I'm a server. When we moved into our home, the salespeople that provided us the homes that we own, and many of the people here sitting here had the same conversation, we were told upfront there was going to be commercial property there. It was sold to us as light-duty medical facilities, day shift hours, not a gas station, not an oil change place with air guns going off all day. Somewhere safe that our kids could be out and about in the community. This is totally not appropriate. We need to define commercial use, put some common sense in it. Do you want an oil change place in your backyard? Do you want it across the street from you? Doesn't take a lot of logic. Do the research. Listen to the Doesn't take a lot of logic. Do the research. Listen to the community.
Anybody? Anyone else like to speak with commission? Yep, one here and then we'll go to the back.
Yeah. Very good. At two seven two High Street, I do not live in that particular area of Sunbury, but I've been here for twenty-five years. And, uh, kind of in concert with this, um, I would like to just throw open to the developer that based on what the residents are saying, and something that's been on my mind for a while anyway, is the possibility of looking for tenants that might fit better than an oil change place. I'm referring to something that would keep, uh, give kids in town, something to do in town. Other people, I don't know, bowling alley, uh, I can't read my own notes. Uh, video arcade, you know, something other than, uh, I guess what you would call a commercial service facility, which I, I guess the oil change place would fit into. But I've been hearing that from a lot of people, a lot of people I talked to that, you know, Sunbury is rapidly becoming a commuter place where people just drive through it. I think we need things to keep people here and things for people to do. So as you were a developer, as you look for tenants, maybe look for some of that one.
Thank you. Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. Uh, my name is Greg Variotti. I'm, I live at, uh, one two six Letter Leaf Circle in Sunbury, uh, with my wife and daughter. We, uh, recently moved back to Ohio and from northeast Ohio, Warren, and my wife is from the west side of Cleveland and North Ridgeville. But we were away, uh, actually in California for twenty-one years. And we were part of a small community, very similar to Sunbury, which is where, really what drew us to this area when we were looking for a place to, uh, call home, uh, when we made the decision to return to Ohio. And what we saw happen in this small community in San Diego is that the, the elected officials and the, uh, uh, the individuals responsible for the zoning and the decisions for the, for the, the community had, uh, effectively liberalized the approach towards bringing in new businesses, bringing in, uh, 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 business development and owners, restaurants, shops, gas stations. What had happened in a matter of two years is that the, the, the effective community feel that we once had that we knew when we moved in had been changed in two years. Two years later, after that, four years, it was gone. So I'm, I'm not speaking to the developer behind me. I'm speaking to you and to those who are elected to, uh, keep safe the ideals and the, the reasons for why people have moved to Sunbury and probably have called Sunbury home their whole life and are hoping that what they're seeing around them all, all over Ohio, as we see in central Ohio, it's growing in all directions. You can't change your mind once it's done. So you will lose. Let me correct myself. You can very easily lose what was once a community in a very short amount of time. And once that's gone, it's, you can't get it back. So my, my hope and my advice is to our, our elected official and those who are representing, uh, the community in Sunbury is that their focus is to maintain the community. First and always the safety and well-being of the community and always looking for growth. It's, that's a very important part of a community and to, to make sure that the community is, uh, is here for the long term. But you have got to be very, very careful. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, Susan Trader, one seven nine Ross Common Drive. I think everyone has made extremely valid points here tonight. I also think the council heard the last time this was presented that the community really did not embrace what the planners are planning for this. We don't, we do not want an oil change facility here. We don't want the traffic. We want a community center. We want a park. We want something that people can walk to. We like the town square. We enjoy walking up here. We enjoy the community feeling, the community vibe. We want to thrive. That is absolutely important to us. But we want to thrive in a very smart way. This development is not smart. We are endangering our children by creating all of these driveway entrances, all of this traffic. This is a residential community on both sides of the street. And we would like to keep it that way. We have all the paths, the travel, the, the bike paths, the walking paths. The entire community uses these. We want to continue that. We want that kind of development. I don't know exactly what it looks like, but it doesn't look like this. That I know. How can we develop it without all of this traffic? How can we make sure we are safe and that we are in, not endangering our children's lives to give commercial developers a profit that we don't need? Sunbury Parkway. We are going to have all kinds of developments there, right? Very close to us. That's the perfect spot for it. We have Tanger. We have Polaris Parkway. We have Gemini Parkway. We don't need any of this stuff. I like, somebody said they want them to serve. I like the small restaurants, the community restaurants. I don't want commercial. I don't want a Chick-fil-A. I'm not sure if you mentioned that the last time. I want something small, friendly that you can walk to, that's not going to engage a lot of traffic. We don't need any more traffic. As we continue to build, we continue to develop more traffic. And that is an issue for me. We are a community. We should be a community of family, not a community of traffic. I think it's really important. It's really, really important that you really consider everything. I will also say, last time this was brought, the entire community was going to rally against it. They will again. We will all pull everyone in both sides of that development, both sides of Route Three. We will pull everyone in. We don't want it. We don't want it. The community does not want it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Uh, Douglas Schuster, seven hundred Fox Creek Road, uh, Sunbury, Ohio. I, I kind of same thing everyone else has said, and I don't want to beat a dead horse, right? And we're all opposed to this. One thing I want to, if you guys recall, is what the developer said when he said his name. Chicago, Illinois.
Thank you.
Anyone else like to speak with the zoning commission? All right. Uh, commission comments, questions? Let's open it up.
I just have, I appreciate everyone coming here and speaking. I live in Sunbury Meadows, so, uh, I live across the street. Um, one, and I think you've all made very, very good point, passionate pleas. I, I understand um, the, the personal effect this has on one. I've seen on zoning, I've been on here for three years. And, and one thing I, I try to keep in mind, and, and I, I guess I'll first start by saying, I don't know about the oil chain. I'm, I'm on the fence about that too. I don't know if I, but, but when I hear it should just be a parks place. I mean, uh, someone owns this land and it has parts to develop and that's been known for years. I don't think they can afford just to say, hey, let's put some playground equipment on there and call it a day. Uh, I, I don't think that's why developers buy land and, and yeah, they look to make a profit. Uh, just like the developer that bought the land that built your houses wanted to make a profit. Um, you know, I didn't sit on zoning, uh, when Sunbury, uh, when community of Sunbury was built, but I guarantee there was people upset that that farmland was going to turn into massive development and flood our schools with all kinds of children. I, I'm sure there was that concern. Um, there was concern with the apartments, um, off of, uh, Granville, the, the Meadows Apartments. They were going to attract unsavory characters. They were going to overload our schools and traffic was going to be horrendous on, on Granville Street. It, it hasn't happened. Um, Cortland Apartments, when those were built, there's right next to a school, that traffic is, the children are going to be in danger because of those apartments being built. It, it hasn't happened. I'm not saying that there aren't things that can be discussed and changed, but to sit there and think the developer buys a land is just going to make it a park isn't reasonable. What was reasonable is having a discussion about a gas station and saying, yeah, I don't think a gas station fits. I don't think that's right. That is a lot of traffic in and out. It's gas tanks. Um, so we had that discussion and that was reversed and that was a very powerful movement from the community to voice that. But, but I think to sit there and say, we don't want anything or what we want is simply these small mom and pop restaurants that I, I don't know if, if that's right either, because again, the develop, if, this has been known as a commercial development for a long, long time before you bought your houses. And then when you bought your houses, you still had to know that. So I knew that, living across the street. I just always wondered what the heck it's going to be. Um, so I, I hear what you're saying and I empathize greatly, but I don't think we see here as residents and say, I want development, just not where I live. I'm going over there where those people live. Um, I don't want the apartments near me. They can be somewhere, but I just don't want them by me. Well, so, so who's the last person in Sunbury that's allowed to say, I'm the last person in Sunbury? Or I, that's not, development's not going to be by me. Who, who has that voice? Uh, because if, if I would have said, living in Sunbury Meadows, I'm going to be the last development in Sunbury. Well, then communities would have never been built. And it would just been us and we would have a nice field across the street there. Our kids complain. That's not what happened. A whole nother development came in. So I, I hear what you're saying and I'm not saying we can't work to find middle ground, but I, I don't think coming in here and saying, we don't want anything. We want it to be grass. I don't think that's a reasonable argument. I think no gas station is a reasonable argument. I, I think that is something that worked well and we had a conversation. The developer worked really hard to appease that. Um, you know, we heard you. Um, and we came back strong on the developer saying, no gas station. And they took that back and said, okay, no gas station. You yourself said, no gas station, no gas station. So I think we need to work a little better about what can be there, fit there reasonably and not have uh, the thought that it can just be playground equipment. So I say.
Thank you. Any other comments, questions?
Uh, one thing I just noted in here, uh, it's page three or page six. I don't know which page number. Uh, but in, uh, three, when we talk about permitted uses and they agreed to remove the gasoline auto service stations. And I don't know what you consider an auto service station, but a Valvoline oil change seems to be an auto service station to me. Uh, I know that that's pretty vague, uh, but I think that we're talking a little borderline there. Uh, I also take note on the, the landscape removal and just making sure that we are meeting the, the levels of standards of trees and, and the proper, uh, landscape in place, which I'm not sure if this meets that according to the spec yet. Uh, I think we have some conversations on that. Uh, in addition to, uh, what was just shared as well. Also, I, I just wanted to make note, because I talked to Alex about this. There was a divergence, uh, request to scale the parking lot sizes down to nine by eighteen when the code requires twenty by ten. But confirm that that's pretty much what is standard across Sunbury at this point, including a parking lot that they're installing here on the corner. So, um, wanted to bring clarity to that and I didn't have any concerns about divergence.
We can, we can continue the dialogue. Again, it is the next item on the agenda, but I, I don't want to shut off dialogue if there's any comments, questions? No comments, questions, we can close the public here. All right, we're going to close the public here. We need a motion in a second.
I'll move to close the public hearing.
Got it. Uh, motion. I'll do a second. Okay.
Mrs. Muller? Yes. Mayor St. John?
Yes.
Mr. Grumman?
Yes.
Mrs. Crawford?
Yes.
Mr. Soderman?
Yes.
Mr. Long?
Yes.
Six CAs, notion approved.
Thank you. Thank you, sir. All right, next item on the agenda is, uh, the rezoning plan district, Bluestone STP, parcel four one seven, four one two, zero one, zero one, seven, zero, zero, three. The applicant is requesting a rezoning from Ag one, A one to PCD and the approval of the associated plan development plans. Um, I, I had some questions for Steph. Um, it seems like the developer is asking for more than, uh, just the approval of the rezoning. We had four, like bullet pointed line items in a presentation in a public hearing that they said they were requesting, including a final plat approval.
Uh, they requested preliminary plat, I believe was what was on there, um, which would be, which would be approved on this, splitting it or based on our subdivision text, a preliminary plat is required to approve the general idea of what a lot would be. Uh, the applicant would still need to come back for the final plat approval along with the, uh, major commercial site plans for each of the lots as well.
You go through those four that were requested. Uh, so there was the development plan, the rezoning, you know, preliminary. That's.
Keep going. It was up there. Down there. So the approval of the overall development plan, which I don't want to speak for the applicant, if I get this wrong, please correct me, um, would be looking at the breakup of the lots and then the approval of the associated uses of the lots that are listed out in the development text that would also be approved. And then the development text is the piece where they listed the permitted uses and listed the, all the divergences were also included in that document. Uh, the preliminary plat would be, as I just said, the approval of the intent that this is allowed by this commission with the idea that the final plat would come back through this commission for final approval. So it could be recorded and the lot can be split up. And then the phase one development improvements, which I believe were the surrounding, um, landscaping, the entryway into the Valvoline lot and the associated sidewalk, as well as the Valvoline site. Um, so Valvoline would still need to come back in for that. Um, but they are just the improvements along the lap with the associated driveway and sidewalk, I believe, would be approved with that.
Thank you. And I have a lot of questions, but one, one of them is just like the, all of the exhibits that I saw were submitted, we're seeing concept or, um, preliminary. And there were so many different divergences in, that were being requested that they were referencing like the landscape plan, a base one, that we would normally like de- deep dive into. Um, especially for a use that is up against a, like a non-conforming use, a planned residential district and a planned commercial district side by side. Like we, we would want to see, you know, pretty specific details about how the screening is going to look. You know, when we're talking about, you know, a Valvoline oil station two hundred and fifty feet away from a home, you know, like I have a whole slew of questions related to that. I feel like this, uh, PCD approval and that we want four approvals, um, for all these things. And the public feedback, like they don't jive. Um, the, the amount of like disclaimers and asterisks submitted in the planned commercial district texts and divergences doesn't line up at all with the amount of public concern that people have. And so I think we're going to, and I'm, I'm talking to Alex just because, I mean, you're the like interface between, um, you know, the developer and the commission and how we get information. And I assume you've taken some complaints as well. But my, my point is that, um, there's a, there's a significant disconnect between the two. And I don't disagree with John. I mean, I'm a huge advocate for property owner rights and being able to take your property through, through the process, but this is part of the process. And I'm, I'm a little disappointed that we didn't get to see an informal presentation, um, again. Uh, I know, I know you've done that a couple of years ago, but that was, wasn't that a rezoning application at that?
Uh, that was a preliminary presentation, but it would have been. And then just for clarity as well, all of the major site plans would need to come back in. So on each of the lots, those would each be brought in front of you with the associated landscape plans. So I don't know how much information they brought on the landscape as far as the border of it goes, but each of those lots would still need to provide their landscape plan as well as their whole site plans.
Yeah, I'm. I don't know. There's just, there's a lot of missing information at this point to, to say that you you need four approvals tonight from this board. I mean, that's, I, I think it's unreasonable given the amount of feedback. Yeah, come on up.
Well, to speak to the, the approvals that we're looking for tonight, you know, we've, a- after the neighborhood meeting, we, we scrapped what we had put together from the, the previous hearing. We've probably gone through forty iterations of site plans to try to figure out a mix that works with the space that we have and that works with the feedback that we got at our HOA leadership meeting, coffee, restaurant and talking to the city, medical. I, I feel like we've nailed all three of those uses. Those are, those are uses that the city wants, that the community has said they want. I, I, I hear folks talking tonight. I, I, you know, from, from being there in the neighborhood meeting and, and walking through the list and saying,
You know, from from being there in the neighborhood meeting and and walking through the list and saying, no gas, but bring us these things. Bring us these things, work hard and bring us these things. And we've spent eighteen months working with our broker network. Tracking people down, asking them to come on site rides to the site. This is a state route. It carries a lot of traffic. We're at a signalized intersection. We've got some interest from these types of users, coffee, restaurants. And we've put together a site plan and we feel like there's enough interest where we have to move the ball forward on the PCD conditions. We have to get back to the commercial zoning in order to entice some of these folks to continue the conversation. So we're here again to put forth. Broad parameters, yes, of the the PCD conditions, but eliminate the gas. The number of divergences is really a reflection of building out this site plan, going through thirty, forty iterations of plans. To come up with, how do we tailor this to get the coffee, to get the restaurant and to get the the medical use? And this is the, this is the effort we've put forward. And I I think if the, if the four things we're asking for tonight is confusing. What we're really trying to get back to is is a set of PCD conditions that allows us to continue to market to these folks and solidify. Real tenants that we then come back to you with and say, look, lot one's gonna be X user. This is the landscape plan. We meet with the neighbor across the street. We talk with with them. Do you want a fence? Do you wanna burn? And we present that to you as part of the next step with each of these users. I'm not sure if you can bring up my presentation again, but I put some additional slides at the end. And Mayor, I think to your point, um, if you could stop at the. Just past the preliminary landscape plan, I think there's this northern landscape over. This is perfect. So as an example of things that we're working on. In the background, over and above what code requires for landscaping, we've walked the property line with these neighbors. We've talked about a fence. We've talked about trees. This is over and above what's required by the code. And so I wanna come back to you when we develop lot four with a fully baked landscape land that meets code and that exceeds it. And that we can show that we've spoken with folks and walked the property line and said, hey, look, this is what they want. We've agreed on a fence color. We've agreed on a fence height. We've agreed on species of trees. These are things we're working on in the background, but we need the PCD as the next step to those conversations. So. Again, I'm not sure if that clarifies things for you, but. This is, this is all the work that we've done over the last eighteen months is to get these users and to develop these PCD conditions.
And I, I wanna make sure that the public and this commission doesn't think that me personally, I've said, hey, we need to go out and get. Fast food restaurants or a Valvoline or a coffee shop at this particular location. I've never personally said that. Somebody else at the city has said that that's on their wish list. I, they're representing themselves. Um, what I have said is it would be great to have medical, uh, medical as in like high paying jobs, typically PCD. If you're gonna do it next to a um, uh, a planned residential district. I mean, do it the best, highest quality materials, you know, low impact, high wages. Um, and like landscaping in the back of my mind in that particular scenario was like, okay, that's gonna be a non-negotiable. And it's, it's gonna be done really well. And typically, if you have a, you know, there's only like three or four. You know, large medical systems in the area and they wanna represent the community well. Um. The, the other thing though, I mean, the, I I don't know who in the city said, we need to get coffee shops and restaurants and things like that. Um, because I mean, it comes, there's like a trade off. I mean, a- a- any type of, you know, convenience to anybody who's like, yeah, I do wanna Chick-fil-A. I mean, you you're compounded with the problems or the challenges of traffic and. You know, operating hours and all the things that you heard from the public that doesn't really jive with a planned residential district. Um, and and just in some of the public comment. Um, defense from the previous public hearing, like what I heard is, you know, if I heard coffee shop, I was hearing more like mom and pop bakery. And like that's, I I think I heard, hey, we would like to see bakeries and things like that. Um. And public may not know, but we have two bakeries like coming into town right now. So a third probably isn't gonna work. Um. Yeah, I I don't, I don't wanna take up too much more time at on this, but I think, I think we've got some pretty significant hurdles. E- especially for any type of approval this evening, um, at least from my point of view.
I just wanna add one more thing too, and I, you don't need to come back up to the microphone, but I do think it's clear from the residents that. A- again, when I'm, I'm, I'm talking about negotiating. I do think, I don't know how we got the name like Valvoline already, because the other three lots, we don't have a name of a, you know, medical facility. We don't have a name of a coffee shop or whatever it might be. We know Valley, I feel like that's kinda like further down the line. For some reason, and and I think it's clear that residents are very hesitant to want an oil change place. And I think the air gun was a very good, whoever said that was a very good example. Um, they're allowed and you know, a lot of uh, you know, tire changing, you're gonna have uh, oil, uh, yeah. I, and and I don't, I don't personally feel comfortable with oil change place. And I don't know how we've gotten that far down to actually name that it's Valvoline in that spot. So if we're to go back and. A- again, I I'm, I'm supportive both sides, residence and development, but there's gotta be a compromise. And I'm not sure Valvoline. Uh, I, residents were upset about gas station, totally agree with that. I can see Valvoline, as you mentioned, a very close one B. Uh, as far as auto, you know, auto care facility. So. Um, you know, medical facility, I think it's gonna be quiet. I think that could be good for residents. Whatever the other two are, I, you know, they can, whatever those F B mayor, mayor had mentioned that, but the, I have concerns with an oil change. Um, I think somebody needs one. I don't know of a Valvoline that's right in front of a development. Um, most Valvolines I've ever seen are kinda along a strip, along a highway, around Polaris Parkway, around. Uh, Route three and and uh, in between new and old Westerville, kind of in a commercial area. I've never seen them just sitting. Right in front of a bunch of houses. So I I would probably uh, argue strongly that Valvoline probably is not a good fit for this development. Um, but I just wanna throw that out there.
One of the things that I would like to add is, I tried to be very neutral on the type of services. But uh, one of the things that we said with it being by the development at the last time we talked was. Uh, the difference in the timing that these would be kind of like daytime businesses and not. Uh, like the medical facility, uh. Daytime business and very little nighttime business. Because when I talked about the gas station, I was talking about the seven twenty-four. I didn't like that. Uh, how the trucks going in and out, can the semis make those turns? You're gonna have that same problem with a uh, auto service store, whether it's Valvoline or an entire store. Because I think it was talking about a tire store at that point, you know. Uh, so. While I completely support being commercial. I bought in this area, knowing it was gonna be commercial. I think it's a perfect area for commercial. But I also think, uh. Because of the unusual lot size and its position. It it has more intricate details that need to be done to find the perfect type of. Uh, product that goes. I'm not saying no to the Valvoline, but at the last time, you know, how the trucks are gonna get there, what kind of trucks? That's where the concern is gonna be for me. And I'm just talking in gen- generalities right here. I would like to see, and when I looked at the survey, most of the survey was talking all about daytime businesses. I'm not actually a. A big proponent of restaurants there. Uh, because I know restaurants are longer than daytime hours. I would rather, I'm gonna throw out the horrible, not a strip center. But the type of business that you come in and you have an insurance people. You have hair or anything like that that is small, where maybe. Instead of having four lots, you only have two lots, you know, where you have your medical and your little individual little areas of businesses. I wanna see something that's not gonna have business at nine o'clock at night. Because if you go through our town at that type of night. The lights and the carpets kind of been pulled up. And I don't want that to be there.
Good feedbacks. Yeah, I I made three notes just for everybody's benefit coming in here, and they were real detailed. It was just, I had some pretty serious questions. Around access. I saw the non-conforming access point by the medical use and I saw the traffic impact study. I read that, by the way. Um. They, one disclaimer in the traffic impact study is that the medical user, the uh, it'd be the northern. Entrance exit from there, they calculated it based on that it was straight across from Leather Leaf Circle. And that's not the case. And I, all I'm saying is I'm not a traffic engineer, but I know if you're accounting for like, wait, somebody lives right across from that. Like, they're gonna be coming out. Um, can we pull up the exhibit, please? Sorry, access, screening and operating hours. Those were the the three things. I'm like, I don't have enough detail on the screening to even get into the uses. Um, because I was thinking, okay, screening could at least like. Barrier the the adjacent, you know, neighborhoods on both sides to the point where. Yeah, it's not as impactful. Any of the ones where you've got, yeah, sure, that's fine. Um, well, that's not great because it doesn't show there the house directly across from where the medical entrance and exit.
Go back to the color, which creates.
I'll learn one now.
Can you zoom in on that a little bit? Like the, the green slide, the access point there. I mean, in the traffic impact study, it said the uh, carpenter modi, the. Um, they said, we calculated that particular in and out point, like it was directly across from Leather Leaf Circle.
Yes.
And it's correct. And it's not, and that is like typically, and this has been kind of a practice of ours. And I think it's a generally accepted engineering practice that anytime you have a road that's that's close together. You wanna try to get it straight across from one another. For the exact example that you don't have headlights going right into that person's house.
Yeah.
And and I'll give like the, for the public's benefit, the the example that we're like trying to solve for right now is like U D F Ace Hardware. Offset, like that's a nightmare. And we don't wanna have that happen in a neighborhood. So, sorry, go ahead.
Totally understand that. I think in terms of that specific request, I I agree. I think that driveway should be aligned. So, again, that's the type of detail that I think we can work out with these individual lots when we, when we come back in. When we're talking about just the overall PCD conditions for this being a commercial property, that's kind of the basis for everything that we do next. So things like that, realigning the driveway, happy to dive into traffic, I think. I was looking at the traffic study beforehand, the way this works in terms of an assignment of trips. All of our trips or ninety percent of our trips are coming in off of Sunbury Meadows. And they're coming into. The site drive over here. So in terms of traffic on Peacock, these drives, again, they were contemplated to connect. They're kind of. Guess I'd call them more release valves, five percent of traffic, ten percent of traffic, if that uses Peacock, but everyone's gonna be using. Sunbury Meadows, left in and then and then a right out. In in terms of the the Valvoline, the Valvoline is the least amount of traffic of the four uses. They came here during our last meeting in February and said, there are no big truck deliveries for Valvoline. They talked about making sure that their facilities, again, we have, there's bay doors, as you know, when you go into a Valvoline, those doors shut. They do all of their work with the bay door shut. And I think one thing we can work on is let's do a sound study. Let's talk to Valvoline. They've got a thousand plus locations across the country. I would believe that a vast majority of those are adjacent to commercial in some way, shape or form. Are they within two hundred feet? Let's find one that is. Let's do a sound study. Let's figure that out. I think we talked about landscaping adjacent to the folks that are right along Peacock Drive here. Do we need a fence on? The south side of Peacock, in addition to the north side of Peacock. These are all things we can talk about, but I can't move forward at all without. The PCD conditions. I'm, I'm stuck.
Well, I'd like to say from my opinion. I'd be willing to do the zoning change. Even the lots change because dividing it into four, it doesn't really matter, you know. But. I would need more time and probably more back and forth to do a development text. And to approve a preliminary plan. Because I don't have enough information in front of me. And I know you gave me a lot, but a lot of it was stuff I didn't really care about, you know. While it's nice to know and approves that you sent out your mailings and uh, your lots, which we, I know we require. The development, this part of the uh, process, that's just extra paper. And I need more information on the preliminary plan and the development text. So if you were gonna ask me tonight to vote for all four of them. You would get my yes on the first two and a no on the three and four.
Yeah, I think we're, again, I'll, I'll leave it up to the commission, but we're comfortable moving forward with the PCD conditions as they're outlined. If if you have specific things that you either wanna table or not approve. Open to that as well. It's just that the PCD conditions are fundamental to what we're, what we're trying to do here as a commercial.
Can you show me the PCD conditions? Cause the, like, when I read them, there were so many divergences that honestly.
I'm not, that's the development, that's, I'm not gonna vote for that.
Alright, can you tell us about where the, where the um, PCD conditions are that you're referring to?
Yes, uh, in our development text.
Yes.
We talk about, there's background and introduction. We go over sub area A and sub area B. We talk about. Ten thousand square feet of commercial uses. We talk about seventeen thousand five hundred square feet of medical uses. So we talk about the overall square footages, map square footages. We talk about, um, you know, the relevance to the two thousand five conditions. We talk about the twenty sixteen comprehensive plan. And then we go through each of the PCD conditions and. We struck through again on page three here when we get to uses that there'll be no gas or auto. And then we go through each of the criteria and then we have the the divergences at the end. And I'll be honest, the divergences, um, I went back through a number of planning commission meetings of other developments in this community and. Pulled those and pooled those together and looked at what they got and why and why that made sense. And that was really my framework for coming up with a list of divergences that we have tonight. It's, it's things like. You know, there needs to be a hundred foot setback from Sunbury Meadows. Well, when we came back before you in February last year. Please move the buildings closer to State Route three. So those are the types of things that are in conflict with code that are outlined in our, in our conditions.
But what you skipped over was.
Yeah.
The lot one, two, three and four and laying out the uses that you're proposing, which would be approved.
Yes, I do list.
Coffee shop, one, service, drive through, instant oil change and medical facility.
Yes, so the PCD would include. The normal commercial uses and a coffee shop, a quick service restaurant that are already in the, already in the PCD. Commercial text. Instant oil change and medical facility. So if you read the PCD conditions, they allow for. Commercial establishments normally associated with and intended to serve the traveling public with motels. Then we struck through gasoline and auto service stations, convenience stores. We struck through that, but we left restaurants. And then we specifically note the, the uses that we're getting some momentum with. With our brokers.
To summarize what I'm hearing, I think every person said tonight is the uses are the problem. And. I heard Mrs. Miller say that operating hours, which I would also agree with. But um. Yeah, I.
Yeah.
I don't know. Personally, I I couldn't get behind the approval tonight. I think this requires further dialogue, but.
Yeah, I just wanna add that.
Yes.
Um, I appreciate the time that you took to meet with the residents and the surveys and I, I spent a lot of time looking at that. And after reviewing that and then hearing the residents and also living here and and seeing what we have and what we don't have. I would really like to see some other proposed businesses, um. Uh, you know, on this suggested list. So we, we just got a new coffee shop. Um. We, there are other needs that we have here and. What is in the surveys don't necessarily match up with what you're proposing.
And and I'm, I had, not to be a dead horse, I apologize all horse owners for that expression, but I. I really do think that, and and we can do a sound study for the Valvoline. We can, we can do uh, that type of test. And I don't have a better word other than to say vibe or um, beautification of that development. But it, you, if you have a medical facility and then whatever boutique shop or something, whatever that ends up being. An oil change place takes away from the curb appeal of a community. Um, it, I don't care what kind of trees you plant, what kind of bushes you plant, or what kind of nice entrance and exit. I just feel like it. I, I don't mean, again, apologies to oil change places, but it just cheapens the look of the community. I I don't mean, again, apologies to oil change places, but it just cheapens the look of the community versus having a a more um I sophisticated front with stores that are more boutique like versus an auto place that um I I think overall devalues the look of that community. And I'll I'll stop talking about, but that's that's, I I am not a, I'm not a strong supporter at all of the oil change, but. And I I agree with what Ms. Crawford said about it. It'd be nice to see based on community needs, other options um versus just the ones we've talked about. I I see the medical facility probably being kind of etched a bit, but but I'd like to see what else is out there commercially.
Any other feedback?
I'll just make one comment. I'm trying to withhold because I'm a resident and I would drive by this every day. So I don't want to have a biased opinion because of that, but.
You have good perspective.
Um, when we, when we last reviewed this, I'm I'm trying to take all this in because this is a very good feedback. When we, when we last talked about this, there was a a hundred people outside or in line to talk about how much they hated the idea of a gas station. And then it wasn't just gas station, it was convenience store. And now we're talking about still an auto related commercial business. I even heard that we don't want commercial. Uh, Mrs. Miller, I said she's okay. I'm I'm coming on the fence. You know, I kind of like the idea of not commercial, but then I realized you invested in the property. You're looking to turn a profit. That's what you do for a living. You've been through thirty five, forty iterations of trying to find the right mix. Um, but that I I think there's still ninety people. If there if you were a hundred angry, we're down to ninety. So maybe we're not as mad about um that it's not a gas station, but we're still not finding the right mix. What Mrs. Crawford just said is an excellent point. What do we not have here? What if we have to go commercial, if you have to make a profit, if this is what you're, you know, when built in this community, I knew it was gonna be something. And I, there was a piece of dirt when I built my house and I drove past and I was like, oh, I guess they're gonna be eventually putting stuff in there. I accepted it. Everybody that built the house in my community, whether they ignored it or not, had to accept the fact that eventually it's gonna be commercial. And if we're mad about it now, I'm a little bit mad about it, but I knew it. I didn't ignore it. Um, but I would like to see something there that is not uh tons of traffic, uh something that's not noisy, something that's not egregious to the front of my neighborhoods that when my family comes to visit my neighborhood, the first thing they see is an auto business. I don't want to see that in front of my community. I don't want, when I sell my house at some point down the road, that when people come into this community, the first thing they see is business. I want them to see residents. I want them to see people outside. I want them to see people enjoying and looking, you know, beautiful trees and landscaping. And that may be a possibility um with what you're proposing, but I know that the people that own the homes are gonna take care of their homes. They're gonna have beautiful yards because they own it, they love it, they live there. Um, people that occupy this plot, these plots for for commercial purposes, they're there for a different reason. They're not there to look good. They're there to bring people in. And that's their job. They're there to turn profit. I understand that. I'm a I'm a business person myself. I understand the need, but I, you know, I don't see a lot of business in this area and I don't, I I guess I'm not seeing why business is appropriate. The next closest business to this area is the dairy farmers in this in the uh the Ace Hardware, which are actually a fair distance away. So we're gonna have this little tiny island pocket of commercial that there's tons of other places we be we could be putting commercial. Why can't we find a way? Why can't you sell the property to somebody that does want to develop it in a way that actually suits everybody that lives there? You know, I I I know none of these, none of these, these community ideas are profitable ideas. They're all happy ideas. They're ideas that are gonna make us feel good about our community, community, and it's gonna make it look good. My wish is that we can come to some kind of conclusion where you don't lose, we don't lose, but we find a way to use that piece of real estate for something that no one is extremely unhappy about.
Any other feedback? If we're gonna, what were our options table? I'd recommend we table, I mean, to continue the discussion.
You have sixty days in order to take action, so you wouldn't necessarily need to table tonight, provided that action, but you can, and certainly if the applicant's willing to do that, you could do that. But you you don't need to.
Okay, then um then I don't think we need to table. And we hear it again next month. Um, there's got, there's gotta be some steps that are taken before the developer comes back. I'm I'm gonna lean on staff to like, do you have any recommendations for how to take the next step?
We can have continued conversation with the applicant and keep them informed based on what we heard tonight from the residents and from you all. And then I can keep communication with you. Uh, you all, or if you have recommendations, feel free to send them to me. We can communicate them back to uh the applicant. If there's anything specific that you guys didn't mention here that you would like to see or that you have for the applicant, feel free to send it over to me and we can communicate it over.
Um, but our our next meeting is the fourth, so it's the week of Christmas. I think it's the twenty second.
I believe it's the twenty second.
Okay. Um, there there will not be a public hearing, public hearing as instantographer, but it will still be a public meeting. We will hear. Okay. All right. Any questions on that? All right. Next item on the agenda is major commercial site plan, Bell Stores, Kinnor Commercial parcel number four, one, seven, one, three, four, zero, two, zero, zero, five, zero, zero, zero. The applicant is requesting approval of a major commercial site plan for a gas station located within Kinnor Commercial Development and the parcel listed above. Is the applicant here?
Yes.
You can introduce yourself and uh in the project.
Uh, yes, my name is Jeff Longtron. It's C S O representative on behalf of Campbell Oil Bell Stores. Address for record is twenty eight hundred Corporate Exchange Trail, Columbus, Ohio, Suite four hundred. Can you guys hear me okay? Lost my voice. I apologize.
Yep.
Don't know how to work this, so I apologize.
You can just take, unless you need both hands, you can hold it.
I prefer this. Um, so uh kind of starting over, but uh we are looking at uh one of the outlots of the Kinnor Crossing Development um that's located at Cheshire and Cherry. Um excuse me. We were here uh in September for a kind of a preliminary discussion to introduce the project. Um, what we're looking to do here um at the southwest corner of the new kind of access road of Cheshire and and Cherry is uh to develop a Campbell Oil Bell Stores uh with the, which is a convenience store, fuel station uh alongside a two bay car wash. Uh, what's shown here on the screen is uh some photos of what the store would look like. Um, which we provided to staff a little bit earlier. Could you go to the site form? That's not perfect, thank you. Uh, so um just, I know we talked about it. Um, the layout hasn't really changed too much from the last time we were here, but uh for the sake of just kind of quickly walking through it, uh proposing around fifty four hundred square foot uh a convenience store right in the center there, uh facing east, um an eight dispenser canopy uh on the front there. Uh, to the rear, there's a two bay car wash uh with some back stalls um which look like the Vs. On the southwest corner, we have the the trash enclosure and then in the northeast corner, we have the underground storage tanks for the the canopy and the fuel. Uh, we're planning to do a monument sign at the northwest corner there, which is a sliver rectangular block. Um, we currently have shown uh roughly thirty nine parking spaces, which uh I think we'll probably talk a little bit further on in a moment, but uh as part of the developer's kind of master plan, uh they did show uh our access point kind of in the southwest corner, which is full access. Uh, and then a ride in, ride out uh driveway along the new uh Cheshire Road on the east side. Those would be our two main points of uh ingress, egress for the project um and be utilized uh, you know, for our day to day operations. We added a pedestrian connection, which is that striping uh that heads to the north, which would connect to a new sidewalk uh constructed along Cherry Street. And then that would also connect uh and would connect to the uh you know, the new Cheshire Road as well as the east west wing road down at the bottom there along the south. We'll have site lighting, uh we'll have landscaping, uh we'll have, you know, the other amenities that sort of come with the convenience store and the fuel station. Um I think that uh in sort of reviewing and discussing with staff, um we did, you could go to the two other pages. We did uh sort of portray and propose sort of a more to last minute revision uh based on just some general feedback that we had received uh working with staff this past week. Um, but ultimately what you'll see here, um those color coded lines uh are easements, uh which if you see the blue one along the south and the east side, it it really encompasses, you know, most of our frontage on on those areas, which does not allow us to have too many trees uh planted or proposed. We do have shrubs all along, you know, pretty much every side uh of our site, but uh we were a little bit light on the tree uh per the requirements. Uh, we heard staff's comments and and I think some commission comments. And uh what we see here is if you just look at the red islands, uh the red areas that are sort of uh newly depicted, uh we have elected to try to reduce some of our parking uh to add in some additional landscape islands. Uh, what this does though is it does put us under the required parking count. Uh, but in speaking with Alex and and the staff, we feel that that might be something that could be supported so that we could hit uh the ten trees required. Um, and then a as well as having landscaping obviously around the perimeter. That's really the, I think, one of the only changes that has kind of come in. And then we did show some other photos uh and aerial perspectives of what the site might look like as well as uh some of the uh building or the, I guess, what some other buildings that look uh to this look in this uh, you know, the brick uh with the tower feature and and the metal roof and the bollards and the decorative lighting along the front. Uh, so that's, that was kind of a a later ad, but um Alex has those, he may have distributed, but if not, if there's anyone who'd like to take a closer look, I do have some printed copies for the commission.
Thank you very much.
Right. Uh, staff report. So as the applicant uh stated, um with the parking and with the trees, they were under the tree requirement. Uh, they needed ten, they had five. Um, and I know the, I pardon me, I gave them information that there's usually a conversation based on parking requirements. So I feel like that would be an easier discussion than reluctantly on trees. So I encourage the applicant to bring that forward. Um, aside from that, there is staff comment number two, which brings up the solid wall. Um, earthen berm or evergreen hedge that needs to be planted when adjacent to a residential district. That talking with the legal advisor, we determined that it isn't adjacent to the residential area as it's kind of catty cornered across. And definition of adjacent is a budding or sharing a property line. So with that, um that six foot wall fence, earthen berm would not be acquired or required on that corner. Uh, I made comment that I don't think it'd be appropriate just based on having a six foot wall on the corner of that intersection anyway. Um, but just wanted to update you guys on that. Uh, as far as rest of the site goes, this is, um, the preliminary plat has been approved for the Kinder Commercial area. So this greater area as a whole. This one would, this gas station would be on lot five, which would be on the redirected Cheshire and Cherry corner. Um, with that, they had a conditional use approved and a variance approved, variance for a setback, which was approved by the Board of Zoning Appeals. And that the conditional use that allowed for auto service station on this lot. Uh, with that, it is in line with the comprehensive plan as they do recommend um planned commercial, but this area has been zoned commercial, but similar uses in between. And then it also recommends a parallel road south of Cherry Street, which is a part of this greater site plan is achieved as well. Um, and then with that, as they said, um, we would require thirty two parking spots. And then depending on the number of employees, there could potentially be more. They had thirty nine parking spots in that plan. And then you're at thirty five now?
Uh, sorry, thirty four. We'd reduce five spaces.
Okay, so they're at thirty four. So thirty two is required per the square footage. And then they need one additional spot for employees on it. So depending on how many are working, they would be required to have one more spot on top of the thirty two and they have thirty four existing.
Does that include the vacuum spots?
It does include the back stalls. That wasn't counted in that number and, you know, it kind of varies everywhere you go, but uh obviously we know patrons would pull in, get their gas, probably run into the store. So even though those aren't designated parking spaces, there would be a sixteen additional, you know, spots at the canopy that people might utilize.
Any questions for staff? Comments, uh questions for the applicant? Gerald comments, questions?
I know the last time we talked about this, my only concern was what I think Alex just answered for us, the definition of adjacent. Um, and I and I realize you were giving us a good legal uh response to are they required to do it? Because legally, if it was uh sharing a lot line, they would be required to put up some type of barrier. Um what is happening there? It it, let's say it was a requirement. Uh, is there all residences, residential properties across the street there? You know, are these, is there an earthen berm in that uh bottom corner where the red and the blue?
So so ultimately, uh what you see here.
What is the elevation, I guess, that we're expecting to see?
Yeah, and I can pull that up here. Right now, on our plan in that southeast corner, the elevation will be right around uh nine fifty five, nine fifty sixish. Um, although residential uh you know, elevation would be, but that is a little bit going a corner. Now, really for that though is if you see right here in this corner, that's a catch basin uh that's being provided by the developer. We're not really utilizing it, but it does, it just does have to store, because it will point on the site, because it's patricious of the road. Uh, and then, you know, rerouting um down and around. So we're sort of fixed at that point. Um, however, we could, I mean, we can look at opportunity at, you know, maybe raising that a little bit within the confines. The challenge we also added, obviously, you look at this blue line there. This is the water utility basement for Delco Water, because there's a water man that's can kind of see the gray W by the landscape shrubs there. So we were trying to add some additional shrubs. We might be able to get some elevation, but luckily we go up water, we shouldn't have an issue because we want to make it a very property, but um uh so we don't have that left room, so we might not be able to go up. Super high.
Thanks for that explanation. Based on something we talked about at the last meeting about screening between residential and I guess multifamily is what we talked about. Is it possible, feasible, legal for them to offer to plant trees in the front of the residence as a concession? To put the screening, right, I I understand his technical reason. He can't put the trees there because it's a catch basin and it's a lower area. So putting a tree there kind of doesn't work. Can can you ask the residents, hey, we can't put this here, but can we put something in your yard? Cause their houses sit back off the lot and you put a screening on the opposite side of the road that technically would be on their property, but it would still be, it would, it would meet the intent of screening from staring at a gas station. And I realize it's one or two residents. But I I think about this, what if it was a hundred residents? How would we satisfy the resident? The lone resident in this case?
Well, to the extent, again, so if you're talking about having the applicant install trees on property that's not his.
Or two.
Maybe. I mean, by agreement, I'm sure with everybody involved, including those property owners, you know, and the applicant, I think that would probably be permissible. And for in terms of requiring them to do so, I don't think we could do that.
Okay. Would you be willing to talk to those residents to see if they would? They would accept some screening revision?
Absolutely.
Okay, that's all I wanted. Thank you.
That probably would be a win for everyone.
Okay, I agree. I think it would. You leave it at yours and they get something out of it.
For clarification, maybe this question for staff. When we talk about the the actual plan here, what is the developer building the street separate from the from the gas station in this case? What I mean by is tree lined roads, is that typically the the developer of the lot or the developer of the road that submits those types of landscapes?
So you're saying like trees along the road?
Right, so the missing of the trees, like is the person building the road gonna put in any tree trees at all?
I don't have an answer for that at this moment. I can get you one, but off the top of my head, I don't know for certain.
Okay.
I don't think that on that east side, this road at the bottom, they're putting street lights. There's a bunch of utility running through there. I don't think they're putting some trees from where I sleep. But I do think that they do have some plant, plant things on the southeast side along a silver essential. Uh, and then it would be, I think, a lot by lot basis as they come back and from the residential home. They're not even requiring it with their body into their high traditional landscape. That's my understanding.
Because there's there's lots on the south side of this before the residential.
Yes.
Development. They would be required to do an enhanced screen.
Yeah, um, the, so the southern lot does have residential budding it to the south. They would be required to do screening on the south side of their lot. That's correct.
The the one thing to call out as well is I I hear that you don't have space for the landscape, but I think you don't have space maybe a little bit by choice. So I see a gas station. Maybe a little bit by choice, so I see a gas station, I see a car wash, so forth. Are we trying to put too much on one lot? That now we are finding ourselves to restrict ourselves on screening because of that.
Well, I mean, I don't, first, I don't think that we're not COVID for the screening. If uh, you know, we were to, Alex, it's that we're not requiring it to it. Now, I'm not saying that we obviously can't explore, trying to. I also feel something I played into this is that there was a setback there and provided previously. Which restricted the water that has provided, uh, well, they'll overhandle five others and I think by the developer. You know, we, we absolutely can look at providing some additional screenings as much as we can handle it, providing some varying heights. I think that the challenge that gets here, as you see that blue lines and some of the infrastructure development providing. Having to swing out the curve all the way towards the other about ten feet just a above that. It's not gonna work, yes. You know, it is our development, but we feel we're meeting the confines, you know, what's been proposed for us.
I mean, in layman's terms, the B Z A approved this setback.
Yes.
Variance, right? A different board. Okay, does that, okay.
And also to confirm, the red, all the red on here is your edits to meet the tree requirement.
Like I said, it would be at five, six, if I'm not mistaken, and. Pretty much we'd be adding, you know, a few additional irons to the north path, which would also provide some issues.
Sorry, acknowledge. Thank you for the uh enhancements to the building materials, all the brick. Any other feedback, questions, comment? Looking for a motion? Got a motion by Mrs. Crawford to approve.
I'll second.
Second by Mrs. Miller, discussion. We'll call.
Mrs. Crawford? Yes. Mrs. Miller?
Yes.
Mr. Long?
Yes.
Mayor St. John?
Yes.
Mr. Soderman?
Yes.
Mr. Grumney?
Yes.
Six CAs, motion approved.
Thank you. Our next item on the agenda is from the visitor section. Are there any visitors which should speak with the Planning and Zoning Commission? Game address, three minutes, sir.
And in general, uh, I don't want to address this particular thing specifically, although it might. Silvery already has. Two of all of these things that they're proposing to build. So going final, this one is very far along, so like I said, I'm not addressing this one. I am going to suggest going forward. As much as we can possibly control that here. We try and bring in to tell them they can help over happen. Secondly, um. Um, I don't know at what point in the process you get into, I I have a bit of this. So I think it's worth saying, so I don't know the process, but if there's any way to try to control lighting a little better, I would like to cast a vote that we do that. As far as keeping it looking down, because I've seen a lot of things built that that was supposed to happen. And it only partially. Is successful. I don't know if it's the design of the lights or something, I think they're all lights or what the bill is, but. You know, a lot of us going off to the sides and uh it would be nice if lighting stayed where lighting is supposed to stay. Not a lighting engineer, I just like what I get to read. So that's.
If there are specific examples, please bring them up to staff or um. Yeah, I mean, in general, we should have a lighting plan that's approved with any new development that.
Well, and they may all be within code and within spec, but if that's the case, then the spec may have to do some.
Sure. We've done that over the past couple of years, changed. Uh, Kelvin of light bulb color, like we used to have the extreme bright like lights in neighborhoods.
It's more a question of uh illumination patterns than intensity. I'll bring the intensity down, that's helpful, but. And I I did this one, I relent my little, tried to make sure they all tone down and.
Right.
I missed, but I can go back to something, so anyway, that's it. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Bennett. Anyone else? Right, uh, we have two meeting uh sets of minutes that we need to approve from September twenty second. I'll make a motion to approve.
I'll second.
Second by Mrs. Miller, discussion.
Oh, yes, on page two, a little bit more than halfway down, Mayor St. John, the N is missing off of.
You got it.
Right. Any others? Thank you. We'll call.
Mayor St. John?
Yes.
Mrs. Miller?
Yes.
Mrs. Crawford?
Yes.
Mr. Grumney?
Yes.
Mr. Soderman?
Yes.
Mr. Long?
Yes.
Six CAs, motion approved.
We've got a um meeting on October twenty seventh, twenty twenty five, looking for. I'll make the motion to approve those minutes.
Second.
Got a second by Mrs. Crawford. Discussion. We'll call.
Mayor St. John?
Yes.
Mrs. Crawford?
Yes.
Mrs. Miller?
Yes.
Grumney?
Yes.
Mr. Soderman?
Yes.
Mr. Long?
Yes.
Six CAs, motion approved.
We've got the zoning report. Alex?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Um, so this month we have had a few conversations with residential developers looking at areas. Uh, we typically haven't in the past, nothing in concrete, um, nothing to bring forward to the board as of yet. Just wanted to let you guys know general interest of what is going on. Um, aside from that, I, this past week, took my American Institute to Certified Planning. Test and I passed it, so I am a certified planner now. Um, and then this month, we had nineteen zoning certificates, seventeen of which were new builds and twelve occupancy permits. It's kind of kept us in line with where we typically are and typically go to at the end of the year. Um, historically, seven more than last year puts us at one eighteen for the year total as far as new builds go. Um, a little less than last year, but right now we still only have um just Pulte developing at the moment, so only one home developer actually going. Um, where that puts us in terms of units is at uh two hundred and sixty five on the year, a hundred and fifty four of which are multifamily. Um, and with that, do you guys have any questions about planning or zoning?
Any questions, comments? All right, thank you. All right, discussion, new business, they on the side of the table? Another question, um, any follow up on the Jimmy Johns, Baskin Robbins signage?
Uh, so I've found a. A text related to that area, but it's from like two thousand eight and it doesn't mention it at all. So I'm, or signage at least on the rear of that site.
Two thousand and eight?
Two thousand and eight.
Eight.
That's what the document said and it was in relation to it. I couldn't find anything related to the meeting in the twenty eighteen section. Or regarding development text from that timeframe. Um, my plan now is to go back to um our storage facility where we have physical documents and look there. Because I couldn't find anything from seventeen or eighteen in our digital documents, so I'm hoping for something physical that's located over there. I have reached out to them and asked if they had anything from the site. Uh, my next step, I'm gonna reach out to that, the tenants of that first building and the people who hold it. Um, just generally for the development and see if they have that, because the only plan I can find morally or more relates to the landscaping rather than the signage. And what looks around that building, uh, so still work in progress.
So just for background, you may have noticed that uh Jimmy Johns, Baskin Robbins has signed and it's lit up. And um, I I was on the Planning and Zoning Commission or City Council at the time, and there was a lot of discussion when we approved those buildings. Um, we approved both at the same time, but. It about like making sure lighting was facing down and there were awnings and the doors were dressed up a little bit. The the direction of the uh trash enclosure and I specifically remember we said no signage on that particular side of the building. Because of the townhomes that are right across the street. Um, and now this one, just it stands out like a sore thumb and uh. On record, it looks a little bit gaudy to me, truthfully. Um, so I'd rather that face inwards in the building, so anyways. Whatever you can find out and whatever help you need from me, I'd like to get that changed. I know we may have like approved, um. Perhaps errantly, perhaps. You know, I don't know, I just want to fix it.
Got it.
So let me know. Thanks.
Yep.
Appreciate it. All right, um, what else do we have? Next meeting, December twenty second, twenty twenty five. Any scheduling conflicts? Right, I'll make a motion to adjourn. Second by Mrs. Miller, discussion. We'll call them.
St. John?
Yes.
Mrs. Miller?
Yes.
Mr. Grumney?
Yes.
Mrs. Crawford?
Yes.
Mr. Soderman?
Yes.
Long?
Yes.
Six CAs, we are adjourned.